Un poco más de información sobre nuestro proceso de pensamiento, sobre el proceso por el que determinamos la transición de la que todos estamos aquí para hablar. Solo quiero dar una breve revisión. Obviamente, ustedes saben que el departamento de recreación había estado ubicado... ahora se llama Departamento de Recreación de Parks. ...había estado ubicado en un edificio llamado Building H en Smith-Vogue. ¿Cuántas personas en esta sala han ido a Building H en Smith-Vogue? Bien, sí. Es el viejo ROTC rifle range que usaron allí. Fue despejado durante muchos años. Y luego, en 1991, la ciudad trabajó en un acuerdo entre la Comisión de Rec y la Boarda de Trujeros de Smith-Vogue. Interesante, la ciudad gastó fondos de CDBG y gastó parte de su propio dinero de esfuerzo para arreglar ese espacio, convertirlo en el espacio de la Comisión de Recreación. Y solo para entender, es básicamente las oficinas administrativas del departamento de recreación. No es un lugar donde se hace programación en ese edificio. Es básicamente las oficinas administrativas. Para compararlo con el centro de señores, tienes todo el espacio de programación a través del edificio. Y dentro del centro de señores tienes las oficinas administrativas. Así que los siete personal que coordinan, hacen todo el trabajo financiero, hacen todo el trabajo de programación, operan desde ese edificio. Así que la Boarda de Trujeros de la Comisión de Rec... Bueno, respaldando un poco más. Hay un programa de enfermería practica licenciado que opera la GCC, que ha estado en el Centro Médico de V.A. durante varios años. En enero, el Centro Médico de V.A., porque ellos están saliendo a la escena, le dijo a la GCC que tenían que salir el 1 de enero de ese lugar. Así que Greenfield Community College comenzó a buscar espacios disponibles en la zona. Se contactaron con la administración de Smith-Vogue y estaban muy interesados en usar ese edificio en particular, Building H, para restituirlo como un lugar para llevar sus clases de LPM. Así que bajo los términos del acuerdo que tiene la ciudad y la Boarda de Trujeros de la Comisión de Rec, hay básicamente un proceso de notificación de seis meses en el que cualquiera puede terminar el acuerdo. Desafortunadamente, en diciembre, la Boarda de Trujeros de Smith-Vogue votó para darle a la ciudad notificación de seis meses de que tenemos que salir de ese edificio. Yo, como Trujero, también sirvo en la Boarda de Trujeros. Busqué más tiempo. Pregunté si podíamos obtener una extensión de seis meses para que tuviéramos más tiempo para poder hacer más buscados. Eso fue rechazado. En justicia, necesitaban tiempo para renovar el espacio porque la GCC quiere empezar sus clases en verano allí, agosto, septiembre. Así que eso comenzó un proceso, para mí y mi administración, de tratar de ubicar un lugar donde podríamos mover este departamento muy ocupado, que maneja cientos de programas en toda la ciudad. Y, por supuesto, durante uno de los momentos más ocupados para su departamento, porque este es el momento de año cuando están preparando para la Liga de Los Menores y preparando para todas las otras actividades que suceden en el verano. Así que hicimos una encuesta de todo nuestro espacio de la ciudad. Miramos todas nuestras escuelas de la ciudad para ver si teníamos algún espacio vacío que pudieramos usar. Miramos todos nuestros edificios de la ciudad. Los edificios municipales, la plaza memorial. Miramos cualquier lugar que poseíamos. Hicimos una encuesta para ver si había un lugar donde podríamos mover este departamento. También miramos hacia la comunidad más amplia. Contactuamos con el Commonwealth de Massachusetts. Hay algunos edificios de oficina estatal en la ciudad. En realidad, el edificio Haskell en Village Hill. Algunas personas no saben que es realmente un edificio de oficina estatal y hay agencias estatales que están ubicadas allí. Desafortunadamente, no tenían espacio en ese edificio. Checamos con la Universidad de Smith. La Universidad de Smith obviamente tiene mucho propiedad y mucho espacio de edificio en la ciudad. Checamos con ellos. También investigamos la posibilidad de... ¿Podríamos poner como un edificio de oficina modular? A veces, ustedes saben que cuando se hace la construcción escolar, a veces obtendrán un edificio de oficina modular. Así que miramos esa posibilidad. Ambos muy caros en términos de costo. Mirando un edificio moderado de precio, comprar o alquilar el edificio, así como toda la preparación de la localidad que tendría que hacerse, porque básicamente tienes que poner una fundación, tienes que ejecutar utilidades. Es esencialmente como construir un edificio. Estábamos buscando un orden de entre $200,000 y $225,000. Para poder hacer eso, y lo estábamos haciendo en medio de invierno, y tendríamos que tratar de encontrar una manera de hacer toda la preparación de la localidad y tenerla lista para el 2 de junio cuando tengamos que entrar. Así que en términos de la mejor explotación de recursos financieros y tiempo, esa no era una opción viable. Por supuesto, miramos un poco en términos de espacio comercial en la comunidad. Pero como muchos de ustedes saben, una de nuestras fortalezas de nuestra economía local es que tenemos un mercado real estate muy fuerte, lo que significa que tenemos tasas comerciales muy caras de un orden de, dependiendo de qué parte de la ciudad, entre $20 y $40 por cuadrado pie. Así que muy caros. Ahora mismo no alquijamos ningún espacio privado para oficinas de la ciudad y realmente sería una propuesta muy cara. Y eso no incluye utilidades, impuestos. La mayoría de nuestras propiedades comerciales tienen lo que se llama triple renta. Así que pagas la renta subyacente y luego pagas los impuestos de propiedad, pagas agua, pagas agua, pagas utilidades en su parte. Así que es una propuesta muy cara. Así que uno de los espacios que encontramos en la ciudad que tenía la capacidad de poder tomar a siete personal era el sala social de día, como se llama aquí en el centro de señores. Este es el plan de diseño del centro de señores, y no espero que puedan verlo y encontrarlo detalladamente. Pero estamos aquí en esta sala. Esto es... bueno, es a menudo referido como la sala grande. En realidad, como estaba diseñado, estaba diseñado como sala multi-purpose 1 y sala multi-purpose 2. Creo que fuera ahora se llama sala grande 1, sala grande 2. En este extremo del edificio es lo que se llama la sala de atención social de día. Así que cuando el proyecto del centro de señores fue diseñado, hubo mucho pensamiento en crear todo tipo de espacio para las funciones principales del centro de señores. Todas, ya saben, esta sala en la que estaban, la cocina, todas las varias salas de computadoras, el centro de fitness, la cafetería. En realidad, todos están etiquetados y han sido usados de esa manera. La biblioteca, el salón de clases. También hay la sala de actividades, que está abajo al final de la calle donde algunas de las clases de danza se llevan a cabo. Esa también tiene una pared de división que pasa para dividirla en dos espacios. Probablemente no lo hayan notado antes, probablemente en la fecha de elecciones lo hayan notado, pero hay una gran pared de división ahí mismo que es mecánica que cierra para crear estos dos espacios separados. Así que la sala de atención social. El pensamiento en ese momento fue que esto sería... Para aquellos que no saben qué es la sala social, en realidad ahora es más común referido como la atención de día de apoyo. Ese es el nuevo término, ya que ha cambiado con el tiempo. Pero en esencia, lo que es, es que es típicamente un proveedor de servicio para los ancianos que tienen Alzheimer o otras formas de demencia que no les permite, que requiere que tengan cuidado, cuidado continuo. Así que el programa que se imaginaba en ese momento fue que esto podía ser utilizado para ese tipo de instalación y que la gente que fuera un cuidador o la gente que estaba trabajando podría traer un relato o padre anciano aquí para que se cuidara en esta instalación. Y se operaría, supongo que se podría operar internamente, pero más probablemente por una agencia externa que lo operaría. Así que cuando el edificio fue diseñado, en realidad fue creado para ser una instalación separada dentro de la instalación. Una puerta separada, una vestibulación separada, una entrada separada. Incluso un segundo conjunto de puertas que cierran que básicamente lo separan del resto del centro de señores. Tiene su propia tubería separada, sus propios restos de baño. Incluso había un derrame allí. Y obviamente, dado la población que se pretendía cuidar allí, la seguridad sería una preocupación importante. Y obviamente, ya saben, entradas separadas, salida separada, eje de entrada separado. Porque, de nuevo, esto no era parte del centro que iba a ser parte de la especie de población general del centro. Así que rápido, a lo largo de los últimos seis o siete años, obviamente, los cambios que han ocurrido en el cuidado de la salud, los cambios que han ocurrido en la forma en que se reembolsa el cuidado de la salud, muchos de estos centros sociales de día o centros de día de apoyo, como se llaman, han estado disminuyendo y ha sido muy difícil poderles apoyar. Y parte de eso se basa en la forma en que la Seguridad y la Medicare reembolsan para estos tipos de servicios. Así que eso nunca se materializó aquí en el centro de señores. Y así, como resultado, el espacio... Sí, el espacio ha sido usado para reuniones. La gente lo ha estado usando para reuniones diversas. Sé que grupos han estado usando ese espacio como parte del centro de señores. Pero, de nuevo, solo para plantear el suelo, nunca se pretendía ser parte del espacio de programación general del centro de señores porque muchos de estos otros espacios fueron configurados para ser realmente salidas flexibles. Esta sala, cuando cierras la puerta entre las dos salas, en realidad crea dos diferentes, y se llaman salas multi-purpose aquí en el plan, que pueden ser usadas para programación diaria. Lo mismo ocurre en la sala de actividades. Las dos salas de actividades, eso también puede pasar. Así que cuando tomamos esta decisión de tratar de mover el servicio de Parks and Rec aquí, fue con la comprensión de que sentimos que tenemos espacio adecuado en el resto del edificio para que las reuniones que han estado ocurriendo aquí puedan ser reprogramadas a lo largo del resto del centro de señores como fue originalmente diseñado. En términos de cuál es el plan a largo plazo para esto, obviamente, no estamos haciendo ninguna modificación al espacio. Hay un pequeño soporte que se está construyendo, pero está libre de pie. Y habrá escritos y habrán divisiones. Y en realidad había una gran carta. No sé si alguno de ustedes la vio esta mañana, de Paul Garvey en el periódico esta mañana, quien habló sobre cómo el Departamento de Parks y Rec ha sido un tipo de orfanato que ha sido tirado por la ciudad. originalmente estaban en un edificio, luego estaban en el departamento de agua en el segundo piso del departamento de agua, que no es accesible para los niños. Así que luego fueron trasladados a este espacio en Smith-Vogue y ahora han sido sorteo de Smith-Vogue. Y ahora estamos tratando de averiguar qué puede ser su hogar permanente. Así que creo que a corto plazo, esto es un buen uso de espacio de la ciudad. Obviamente, la instalación fue pagada por los préstamos de desarrollo de la comunidad lo que significa que hay restricciones federales sobre lo que este edificio puede usar. Y para aquellos que dicen que esto es un plan para convertirlo en un centro de comunidad, permítanme asegurarles que eso no puede pasar. Eso es ilegal. Debido a que usamos préstamos de desarrollo de la comunidad federales que son utilizados para las poblaciones de ingresos bajos y moderados y debido a que los señores son por defecto eligible para fondos de CDBG, esta instalación debe ser principalmente un centro de señores. Y la única forma en que podríamos cambiar eso era si North Hampton decidiera no participar en el programa de préstamos de desarrollo de la comunidad nunca más. Y incluso entonces tendríamos que esperar cinco años para hacer eso. Y probablemente tendríamos que pagar de vuelta parte del financiamiento. Los fondos de prestado de desarrollo de la comunidad fueron usados para pagar el servicio de deuda en este proyecto en particular durante los últimos años. En realidad estamos haciendo el último pago de deuda de prestado de desarrollo de la comunidad en el edificio este año usando fondos de CDBG. Y luego, hasta el 2029, la ciudad pagará esos pagos de servicio de deuda. Todavía quedan unos $2.9 millones para pagar la deuda en el edificio y eso solo saldrá de las rendidas generales. Así que ese es un tipo de imagen. En términos de Parks and Rec, de nuevo quiero enfatizar que estas son las oficinas administrativas del Departamento de Parks and Rec. Todo el programa que ocurre para Parks and Rec ocurre en todas las otras instalaciones de la ciudad. Ya sea en Musanti Beach, ya sea en Arcane Field, ya sea en Vet's Field. Hacen muchos programas en Look Park. Ejercitan muchos de sus programas allí. Muchos de ustedes pueden tener hijos o nietos que pasaron por el programa de seguridad de la ciudad. Ejercitan el centro acuático en la escuela secundaria JFK y hacen aerobics y programas de surf abiertos. Así que todo el programa que hacen es en torno al resto de la ciudad. Este no va a ser un lugar donde la gente viene a hacer programas de recreación o programas de parques. Este va a ser un lugar donde habrá personal que trabaje en el desarrollo de programas. Hay un soporte de cliente para que si la gente llega que puede querer obtener un certificado, pueden querer registrarse para un programa, pueden venir aquí para hacer eso. Pero, de nuevo, vienen a través de una entrada separada, vienen a este oficio, no a través del centro de señores. Y principalmente, son las horas de trabajo del departamento. Es el departamento de la ciudad, así que está abierto de 8:30 a 4:30. Así que si hay eventos que ocurren aquí a la noche o en los fines de semana, no habrá personal aquí. No habrá gente que venga al centro durante este tiempo. El parking, sé que ha sido un problema importante. Siete personal. Ya hemos estado en discusión con la Autoridad de vivienda de North Hampton y ya hemos obtenido un acuerdo para poder tener siete espacios de parking para que aquellos personal puedan parcar, no en el parking del centro de señores, no en ese parking, sino como parte del parking de la Autoridad de vivienda. Así que no va a haber siete personal parados aquí. Y, de nuevo, no tenemos... Sé que la gente tenía visiones de niños en camisetas de fútbol corriendo por el centro de señores o corriendo hacia el centro de señores, pero eso realmente no es lo que está sucediendo aquí. Estos son principalmente los padres que vienen a registrarse. Y lo que estamos tratando de hacer, y estamos encontrando que mucha gente lo prefiere, es que la mayoría de la registración se mueve a la registración online. La gente quiere solo registrar para cosas online, pagar con la tarjeta de crédito. Y eso es para familias ocupadas. Eso es cada vez más la dirección que estamos hacia. Así que creo que incluso vamos a encontrar que habrá menos y menos clientes que vengan. También quiero señalar que el centro de señores es un lugar donde la gente además de los señores viene todo el tiempo. La gente viene aquí para eventos de la comunidad, vienen aquí a votar, vienen aquí a donar, vienen aquí a comprar libros, vienen aquí a comprar pasos de PETA. Y esos no son solo para los señores, son para cualquier miembro de la comunidad. Así que ya hay otros miembros de la comunidad que vienen a usar el centro en una base diaria. Obviamente, todo el gran programa que ocurre aquí. Así que ese es básicamente mi rápida revisión de dónde estamos, cómo llegamos a este punto. Permítanme asegurarles que si hubiera algún otro espacio que yo tuviera disponible que pudiera llevarlos a través de este periodo de tiempo, entre ahora y el 2 de junio, no tendríamos esta reunión. No tendríamos esta reunión porque yo ya habría ejecutado ese movimiento. Y simplemente no hay. Todas las otras opciones son más opciones a largo plazo. Y ustedes saben que la gente que participó en el plan de este centro sabe que si están tratando de planear algún tipo de nuevo edificio o algún tipo de nueva instalación, toma tiempo. Así que a corto plazo, realmente creo que este es el uso más costoso de dólares y recursos de la ciudad y creo, fuertemente creo, que trabajando con el personal del centro de señores, que el edificio, como fue originalmente diseñado para ser programado, podemos continuar concomiando todos los programas, todos los grupos de personas que han estado usando este centro. Y a medida que avanzamos hacia el futuro, obviamente, estaríamos buscando otras opciones relacionadas con Parks and Rec porque obviamente sabemos la cambiación de la demografía de nuestra población de señores. Así que voy a dejar eso y voy a trasladarlo a la gente que quiera hacer preguntas solo para que podamos... Puedo tratar de responder vuestras preguntas, puedo tratar de alargar vuestras preocupaciones y hacer esta reunión más sobre vosotros preguntando a mí y dando mi feedback. Así que sé que tenemos un micrófono. Oh, así que creo, no sé, ¿quieres...? ¿Queremos que la gente venga al micrófono? Bien, ¿y ese es usable?
Sí, no lo hagas.
No lo hagas.
Bien. ¿Debo hacer este el que la gente quiera venir?
Si la gente quiere venir.
De otra forma, vas a tener que tocar Oprah y caminar con el micrófono.
Mi nombre es Louis Spatter. Empecé a estudiar inglés hace unos ocho años. Hace unos ocho años. Y ya hemos dicho que es un espacio, pero ya tenemos que... No hacer una rehuérsula ya porque de conflicto y... Cuando... Nosotros nos dedicamos a los ancianos en todo el valle. Y tuvimos un show en este lugar, pero van a tener a algunos niños. Y, por supuesto, las escuelas tienen un tiempo difícil de programación que normalmente hacemos. Y ya se nos descubrió que esto estaba ya reservado, aquí es donde normalmente hacemos nuestras rehearsales. Y no vamos a poder hacer una rehuérsula. Normalmente, si no podemos hacer una rehuérsula, estamos en la sala social. Y hemos estado en la sala social muchas, muchas veces. Así que ya está afectando a nosotros.
Y lo aprecio. Y he hecho el compromiso con el personal que conocí antes de que se anunciara esta transición y cuando conocí al Consejo de Aging. Es mi compromiso trabajar con ellos para averiguar cómo podemos programar este edificio para que todos tengan la oportunidad. Y si eso significa que en vuestro caso, si necesitas un espacio de rehuérsula de música, podemos trabajar con usted para tratar de encontrar espacio de rehuérsula de música alternativa porque tenemos otros activos en la comunidad que probablemente podamos trabajar. Pero ese es el tipo de problema que el personal estará trabajando. Saben, el centro, a su crédito, los diseñadores realmente trataron de crear un espacio flexible que crecería con el tiempo y crecería a medida que la comunidad cambiara y a medida que la demografía cambiara y a medida que las cosas que la gente esté interesada cambiaran. Y así, hay mucho espacio flexible construido. Saben, estas puertas, de nuevo, fueron originalmente diseñadas para cerrarse para que haya dos espacios de reuniones separados. Y cada uno de estos espacios es 12 metros.
Tenemos 15 personas.
Exacto.
Y estamos jugando con todo nuestro equipo aquí.
Mm-hmm. ¿Y este es donde usted rehuérsula, aquí?
Aquí es donde rehuérsulamos. Y si quieres tocar, digamos, Bingo aquí al mismo tiempo, eso sería imposible.
Bueno, habría cantando, habría música pasando, eso es correcto. Así que tendríamos que trabajar en encontrar usos compatibles que puedan trabajar juntos.
Pero tú...
Sí.
Pero lo quitas haciendo eso.
Entiendo que eso va a ser un cambio y tendremos que trabajar en compatibilidad. Lo que entiendo en términos de estas puertas en el centro, que fueron diseñadas...
Gracias, Mr. Bear.
Solo quiero decir esto. Mi comprensión es que estas puertas están cerradas unas diez veces al año aquí en el centro. Bueno, dos veces para las elecciones porque votaron aquí en la segunda votación. Así que parece que hay más capacidad para usar estos espacios multi-purpose y los otros espacios multi-purpose en el edificio. Y vamos a tratar de trabajar para asegurarnos de que compongan todos los programas. Tengo a alguien con un micrófono atrás, que creo que era el siguiente.
Es yo.
Él dará el micrófono a usted.
Es yo, Jerry Arquill. Cuando la capacidad de la ciudad de usar el espacio en la escuela de la Comisión de Rec te surgió de repente, no te gustó. Y te reclamaste por la falta de transparencia. Creo que dado las cosas que has dicho hoy, si habías dicholas antes y dado los señores la oportunidad de aceptar la decisión, todos habríamos ido con ello. Y de hecho, no creo que haya mucha gente que disagreea con la inevitabilidad de esta conclusión, al menos a corto plazo. Sin embargo, la falta de transparencia es un verdadero problema para nosotros porque eso parece ser un atributo importante de nuestra gobernanza.
Y eso es... Y ese es un punto muy justo, Sr. Jones. Y aceptaré y aceptaré esa crítica. Obviamente, cuando la decisión se anunció, por ejemplo, me preocupaba... Parte del proceso que tuvimos que pasar fue que tuvimos que contactar con HUD, el Departamento de Desarrollo de la Comunidad Urbana, para incluso ver si esto era una posibilidad. Y les diré que no quería anunciar en enero o febrero que estábamos mirando al centro de señores y luego hacer que todos se enojen y se preocupen y luego hacer que CDBG me diga, en realidad, no puedes hacer eso. No se te permite hacer eso. Y tuvimos a alguien... Tuvimos otro edificio en la ciudad, la instalación de James House, que también preguntamos si usaría eso. Y eso nos dijeron que no se nos permitía. Así que la forma en que la Comisión de Desarrollo de la Comunidad y HUD miraron esto fue que este espacio es aproximadamente el 6% del área total de cuadrado del centro de señores. Eso es lo que equivale, es el 6%. Y de hecho, todo el resto del centro de señores, como estaba diseñado, permanecerá sin cambios y no será afectado porque esto va a ser completamente separado. Y así, la Comisión de Desarrollo de la Comunidad nos dio la autorización para poder hacer esto, sabiendo que todavía íbamos a mantener esto. Saben, el 94% del edificio todavía se utilizaría para su uso primario, que es como un centro de señores. Así que luego también estábamos mirando muchas otras opciones, incluyendo mirar las unidades modular. Estábamos mirando en edificios escolares. Tuvimos a un arquitecto caminar por la plaza memorial conmigo. Algunos de ustedes que han estado en la plaza memorial saben que hay un tipo de mezzanine que fue creado por los espacios de oficina del estado. El problema es que el elevador no sirve ese piso, así que no es accesible para los niños. Así que nos dijeron por un arquitecto que probablemente costaría unos $400,000 o $500,000 solo para restituirlo, para hacerlo accesible. Y obviamente, eso no es algo que podríamos hacer el 2 de junio si lo estuviéramos haciendo. Así que cuando terminamos todo ese proceso, creo que fue en marzo cuando llegamos al final del proceso y literalmente aquí es donde volvimos a considerar que este espacio era el mejor espacio viable. Conocí al director de servicios de señores para hablar con ella sobre ello. Y luego conocí al Consejo de Aging inmediatamente después de eso para que ellos se enteraran de lo que estábamos planeando hacer y que lo anuncié al público. Así que eso se anunció en marzo, creo que fue el 12 de marzo. Y obviamente, la fecha de deadline es el 2 de junio para cuando tenemos que dejarlos de ahí, según el acuerdo. Así que el plazo para cuando se anunció fue marzo. Y luego, obviamente, he estado recibiendo muchos feedbacks y escuchando de muchos miembros de la comunidad sobre ello y muchas buenas cartas al editor. Así que ahora tengo a otra persona que tiene el micrófono.
Sí, Jerry Arquill es mi nombre. Lo siento. De todos modos, soy psicólogo geriátrico retirada y también he sido director de la Comisión de señores. Oh, bien. Como dije, fui geriátrica retirada, psicóloga. También he sido director de la Comisión de señores y soy una activa miembro del centro de señores ahora. Ya se están creciendo los programas. El centro de fitness ya no se encuentra en el centro de fitness. Tenemos tantas personas, incluso yo tenía un accidente. Hay casi 6,000 personas que fueron servidas en la sala social del año pasado. 57 programas se programaron. Ahora, eso no incluye programas de entrenamiento para voluntarios, que tienen cerca de 15,000 horas. No incluye reuniones de personal, alquileres o solo reuniones impromptuas. Hay más programas que se programaron para eso, 19 más programas. Esto es un gran problema porque no hay suficiente espacio para todos ahora. Incluso la clase de astronomía estaba en el medio de la sala aquí. No había lugar para los señores para venir y sentarse mientras esperan sus programas. Además, otra gran preocupación es que estos espacios no pueden ser alquilerados más. Y parte del presupuesto del centro de señores se remita a los alquileres y eso podría ser cerca de $8,000 a $10,000. Y, de nuevo, también me preocupa el parking con la gente incluso corriendo para conseguir cosas, cosas así. Creo, y también me gustaría preguntarle, ¿qué podría parecer temporalmente? ¿De qué hablas con tiempo? Creo que el Departamento de Rec es maravilloso. Creo que merecen su propio espacio y la capacidad de expandirlo. I think they deserve their own space and an ability to expand like we are. We've been on a changing demographics, as you said. And I would also ask respectfully, respectful, whatever it is, that you honor citizens, senior citizens enough to include us in any decisions.
Thank you very much. Just to answer the, the question that you have, obviously, when we get everyone in there and settle and get them, and then we have to do the cleanup at their old, old office space, obviously, there'll be a bit of a transition period as they, as they get going. It'll also be a transition for the senior services staff here to work through. But obviously, you know, we, we wanna begin to think about more long-term what the, what this department looks like and where, where it might end up. Again, I have to caution you though, because that will, you know, the idea of building a new facility is a, is a costly proposition. And so that's something that we would have to look at. We have other capital needs in the project, in the city. We have other building needs in the, in the city. But it's definitely something that we would begin thinking about more long-term. This is a, you know, this is a short-term fix to a deadline, a six-month deadline that was imposed on us. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's a long-term, permanent solution, because obviously, as the center needs more space, you know, that's something, and frankly, I hope that the Parks and Recreation Services flourish here in the city and that they're able to, to also offer programs, which I would say are for ages, you know, all, you know, it's for all ages. They do programming for all ages, including seniors. So, so that's the, so that's really the thought process at this point. My main issue was, where am I going to get this very busy staff settled so that we have continuity and they can continue to do their work? And so that was the, the process. And then we'll begin, you know, I know the Rec, the Parks and Recreation Commission has already been talking about, you know, looking around at some of their land, some of their facilities, to see whether or not there is space at some of their existing land because we own, you know, places like Arcanum Field and, and other places where there might be space to be able to, to come up with a facility. And that would, you know, that would make sense because that's where their programming occurs. They're in the middle right now of finishing the Florence Fields project, which is a new major recreation facility that'll be coming online this year. You may have seen some of the construction and the playground work that's happening there now. So that's a big project they're working on, but obviously, it's a longer, a longer-term conversation.
Hi, my name's Lane Hurston. I just have a couple comments. First, I want to thank Smith-Vogue for making their space use consistent with their vision and their purpose by having the nursing program there. And that's a big benefit to the nursing world, to the vocational directions of many of our youth. So I'm very, very happy with that. Secondly, I just wanna comment on something, and I've been getting a little more concerned about this issue as I've heard you, to be honest. A key characteristic with successful government is sort of the concept of agility. And so what I'm hearing is that you, in, in terms of this problem that you had, you reacted to it, you have no backup plan for what happens if, in terms of space use. And so I guess that North Hampton Government sort of fails the, the criteria for agility. I would be concerned though, if, what if there was a fire in, in one of your major buildings or if there was a concern somewhere, what would you do? So I would advise that you and your team put together some kind of backup plan for what do we do in the event of losing major space and be able to act with agility to respond and deal with that without bringing all this kind of angst forward. I'm sorry. And, and I just wanted to identify, what concerns me also is that of late, it seems that there have been a number of decisions that have been made without community input. The Zipcar issue at City Hall. I've gone many, many times now, people are forced to go into the handicap just to park their cars, or there's long lines there because we took two spaces away that didn't appear to be used all the time, and the result is some backups at some very busy times. So that was sort of the issue. The benches on Main Street, the water and sewer rates that does look like they're making changes in that. Now, the use of the senior center, there's been absolutely no input on that before the fact. I feel a little unhappy that apparently, staff and the Director of Senior Center seem to identify this as a viable space.
No, that's, that's actually.
Okay, well, then I'm glad I'm wrong about that. I'm glad I'm wrong. Thank you, I stand corrected. And, and so I, I would just make those comments that, that, to sort of shove people aside and just think that we could, you know, alter the existing space for those statistics that I think were beautifully shared, is just a slap in the face to our seniors and for that.
Well, obviously, one of the things I've strived to do since I've been mayor is to be very open and transparent about the decisions that I've tried to make. The Zipcar, the Zipcar use of those parking spaces actually went to the City Council. It had to be voted on by the City Council. It went through their whole process. But I'm just telling you that in terms of that being my fait accompli or something like that, we've had a lot of community discussion about that. We heard a lot of feedback, because originally, they were gonna be in the parking garage, and people were very upset about that. But I don't wanna turn this into Zipcar.
Thank you.
And I will certainly, I mean, I will, I will take, I will take my lumps for decisions that I've made that haven't been correct or haven't been well-received. I feel like I've always been open about that. I've been open to changing my mind if I, if I make a decision and then I'm able to think about it. But again, that's the nature of, of the job that I have, of having to make a lot of decisions. And, you know, in terms of agility, I mean, this is not, it's fairly unprecedented that we've had to move a city department in less than six months.
There could be a fire.
There certainly could be a fire, and we would, and, and we would be ready, and we would, and we would probably be going through the same exact process we went through in this particular case. And we'd be trying to think about what's the most cost-effective way for taxpayers, which I also know is a concern.
My name is Jane Goyet. I was on the building committees since day one.
I can't hear you.
Okay. I was on the building committee since day one. The only available length in the city of Northampton at that time for us was this piece. It is less than two acres, but was kind of required. When the architect looked at it, the rule of thumb is five square feet for every seat in Northampton. Half the time, there were 5,000 seats. Five times five is 25,000 square feet. This building is 18,000 square feet, so it was undersized at the beginning. You have now 5,500, 6,000, as Lady said. That would be 30,000 square feet for this building alone. The parking lot was shortchanged in the first place. They made the parking spaces straight in instead of them. So we could get more in. This is wrong. We need double the space. Don't tell us we can accommodate more people than what we've got. So we're using wrong things.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Caladino, and I use the senior center, I use the gym, I use the classes, and it's a very vibrant and wonderful resource in the city. I'd like to question your definition of surplus space. Here we have a room, and let's, let's, that was designated. Louder? Okay. Here we have a room that was designated for seniors in a particular way. That didn't come to fruition. It's now being used for seniors in a different way, but still for seniors, given the numbers you just gave us, you just shared with us about programming, given the information we just got about the undersizing of the building to begin with. So when you put defined space elsewhere, it seems to be, your own very own testimony today, that what you did was say, well, this room is not used enough, so let's push the programming out of that room, squish it in the building that's undersized, and then declare it surplus space. So I have a real problem with that declaration of surplus space. I go, as I said, I go to the gym. It's jammed almost all the time. We don't have a place to do stretching, which is, should be vital if you go to the gym. And frankly, not to be disrespectful, but we don't have a place to change. And if you've ever tried to change into gym clothes sitting on the toilet, it's not a lot of fun. But I don't end on that kind of ha-ha note. I think the declaration of this as surplus space was in error, was in error. It is not surplus space. It's space that you took programs out of, shoved it in the rest of the building, and said, oh, now we have surplus space. So I have serious concerns about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, there's been a few moments of two events that are significant to me. One of them was the change of the space that was done in less than a transparent process. The other is the change of the name of who we are to Senior Services instead of the Council on Aging. And the reason why these things are significant to me is that in planning, we look at what the needs of the target population are first. The needs that I hear most often and that we bring up in the Wisdom Project are, one, that elders need a place to congregate. They need to get out of their houses and feel like they're part of a community. The second one is the need for meaning, relevance, and respect from the whole community. These are the two needs that I see we're in danger of not needing. I think that it's important to have services available, but the primary thing that I hear from elders and have heard for years is the loss of relevance, the loss of, of caring within the community. And this is how we seem to be interpreting this move.
And I, I appreciate that, and, and, you know, that, that is not my intent. That is not my intent to, to in any way minimize the importance of this facility, the importance of, of the services that we provide to seniors in the community. I donated to this building when it was being built. I sponsored, you know, furniture in the building, my, my family and I. I understand the importance of it. I wasn't in city government at the time when, when it was built, so I didn't vote for it, but it was before my time. But in terms of the change of the name, we still have a Council on Aging. The Council on Aging is the advisory board that's formed under mass general law. And in turn, and so what we were trying to do with the change was to clarify that there's this advisory board called the Council on Aging, which is made up of seniors throughout the community, and then there's the staff that run all of the programming and all of the services. So the departmental name was changed to Senior Services, but the, the Council on Aging remains. For me, it was confusing to people that you had an advisory board called the Council on Aging, then you had a department by the same name. So it was really about clarifying that, and many communities, in fact, I mean, as we know, the terms that are used to describe seniors have changed over time. It's been, it's been an evolving, just like the thing, just like the Senior Day terminology has now changed to Supportive Day because of the, I'm not sure how that happened, but that's, so the terminology has changed. And we were really just trying to modernize that. And it was not, and obviously, senior is in the name of the department, Senior Services. And so we're not in any way trying to minimize that.
I, and most of the people in the room are not members of the council.
Exactly.
They have no belonging to the council then, as you described.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. But you, but you belong to a community of seniors who come here to the senior center, and we have a staff called Senior Services whose job it is, is to provide services, not just here at the center, but throughout the community to, to people over age 55.
I have a suggestion. There's an enormous building that the police department just opened. It's enormous. And I don't know why, it's bigger than City Hall. It's enormous, and it's, you can find a little space like that in the police department very easily, and they wouldn't miss anything. Please, consider the police department.
Yeah, you know, one of the issues with this police department is we have, you know, the, the first floor where people come into the lobby area for services or to get records, that's a space that's, that's open to the public and open to customers, but the rest of the building is a secure facility for obvious reasons. And so there's layer after layer of security. It's not a place that, that we could have a Parks and Rec department being run at it. That's really not how, how it was designed. So that would be a challenge.
My name is Ellen Coteen, and I was planning to use a few minutes ago, and when you made mistakes, you've been open to correct them, because I think you made a mistake now. And I have two questions. One is, are you open to changing this decision? And the second question is, what would you have done if this space wasn't here?
Probably what I would have, what I would have had to do would be to go to the City Council and see if I could appropriate funds on an emergency basis to be able to lease private space somewhere, which would have been quite expensive to, to try to do. And then we would have had all the other issues around outfitting the space. We would have had to have dealt with things like custodial maintenance, parking, all the other issues. So that would probably be what I'd be doing, and that would be significant in terms of cost, in terms of a cost outlay. We would also have to go through a procurement process, most likely to do that, because anytime a state or local government has to go through that, they have to do a formal procurement and bidding process and pay prevailing wage, et cetera. So that's probably where I would have, would have been, would have been forced to do if I could not find any other city-owned space that we could make this move to. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. What was the? You know, at this point, it's, we have, you know, we have a staff of seven employees, you know, who are, you know, good folks, they live here in the community, they, they work hard, they're providing these services. They are in the process, they have to be out of that building by June 2nd. And so that's where we're, we really are, and we're already doing some of the work to prepare the space for them. So I, at this point, I really feel like this is the best short-term decision in terms of what, and again, I'm trying to balance. Now, part of my job is to have to balance all the various competing interests in the city, and I have to try to balance all the needs of all of our different city departments. And so that's why I think this is the decision that we have to move forward with. And then obviously, we can begin looking at more long-term solutions so that we're able to, able to free up the space in the future. So that's, that's, that's my answer to that question. I'm, I'm days away from, 45 days away.
We've heard a lot of "I" in this conversation. I did this. I did that. I decided this. Do you know that March was not an appropriate time, to your question, to tell the people in this city that you had anything that really could be done, and you knew about it since December? That is not an appro-- I want to know if you think that's correct. I'm not answering your questions, okay? The second one is, that program that was going to be in the back room was for seniors. Seniors are the main people who have dementia. So to try to categorize it as something that you change because it wasn't really for seniors is wrong. I'd like to know if you agree with me on that. The third thing is, your search was all done by someone, I guess, or people on your staff. It was not a community decision. It did not, as I understand it, involve the important people who work here. And I think you should today pledge yourself, I'd like to know if you agree, to have a committee, a very short-term committee, to work on where these folks could go, since you've already decided that they're gonna go here very shortly, where they could go so that in six-- Where they could go so that in six months, we could have our space back here. Do you agree?
So in terms of the March, March is when I announced what we had decided in terms of the space. But when the decision, when Smith vote voted on this back in, I think it was December 2nd, it was obviously clear at that point that we were going to have, you know, I went before the, went before the council, it was in the paper, that we were going to now have to start looking at all available resources where we could move them. So I don't think this was just announced that we were needing space in March. It went back further than that. In terms of, in terms of a search committee, we, you know, we've got a Parks and Recreation Committee. And one of the things that they are going to be tasked with is looking at how this works, as well as thinking further in terms of long-range planning about where, about where the Parks and Recreation Department might go.
They are not seniors, sir. They are not seniors. You are not including seniors and staffs in this meeting.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that as a suggestion. It's not something that, at this point, I'm ready to commit to. Because again, my goal right now is to get this transition done, have some time for us to be able to get them settled, and then be thinking about a longer-term planning process.
Long-term. You didn't answer my question. Six months.
Yeah, I think six months would be a challenge for us. Six months.
Here's a good challenge.
So thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, please. I have to leave. My name is Lorraine Zaleski, and I've been using this facility for quite a while. And this input has been wonderful. We all agree to it. But the sad part of it is, it's a done deal, isn't it?
There's some folks with their hands up in the front. Oh, sorry, Jim. Sorry about that. I didn't see you.
Yeah, you can call me Jim, so I guess I'll have to introduce myself. I'm Jim Spencer. I spend about 80% of my month at the Senior Center. I think I don't come here maybe three days, every three Fridays a month I don't come here. I give that time to my wife. However, I have seen, I have seen this Senior Center growing from the time when I was teaching up at the old place. That was really good, and it was such a great, wonderful thing to come down here. I teach four classes, and next year, I plan to teach eight classes. Out of those eight classes, I probably won't be able to do four of them because there'll be no space. What I'm looking for you is, and seniors are growing, you know that. Your city is going to be 50% seniors by 2025. This place is going to be too small by 2025. Nobody's addressed the growing population, what we're going to do with that. That's coming. That's your responsibility to look forward and get something done. What I'd like to say, six months is too short. I understand that. And I agree with you. That's a job in six months. Give us a year. Just say yes for a year, and we'll be happy.
Hi, my name is Judy. I'm very concerned about what's happening here. I have to say.
Where do you live, Judy?
I live in, okay. So, next door is a building that was meant for the elderly. Everybody in this room, and these are the people that built this city up to what it is. It was actually a town when they were all, you know, paying their taxes and building this town up. They served this country for people like you to be able to stand up there at that podium and go on and on about that map there of this building and stuff like that. I heard you a couple of times actually insinuate, you'd say it was the Senior Center, and then you'd say it doesn't really belong to the Senior Center. I heard you say it. But here's my example. Next door, that has become nothing but, it was meant for seniors, that building, and it's become nothing but a crime-ridden disaster. I've been in it. I know people who live there. And it breaks my heart that seniors have to go live in that building. So, I don't understand why you, and I agree with the woman, I love this woman that said, she kept hearing "I, I, I, you, me." This country is about, we the people, for the people, by the people. And we are the people, not you. You are the mayor of Northampton, but you represent every single person in this room. And I really wish that you would. I'm going to say this. A tax, once a tax, always a tax. Once a room, always a room. And the next thing you know, you seniors aren't going to have any rooms because they're going to take them all. And he's going to blow the air as to why they're taking them. And you're going to lose your space. You're going to lose it all. You're going to end up in that building over there. I'd like to see you, Mayor, go live in that building for one week and see the horror that that building has become. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, my name is Doris D'Amio. And that previous lady just said, I live in that dump next door. But what my irritation is, has nothing to do with what you want to do with this building, but it's the parking. I don't know how they figured the parking spaces out when they built this facility. I know you have a lot next door and some space for the Cahill Apartments. But I just came home, and I have nowhere to put my car. But I live there. I pay rent there. What am I going to do? Mine wasn't a parking lot. Size or limitation of people to the size of this building, I don't know. But how am I going to go home now? I don't know where to put my car.
Thank you for that comment, ma'am. Again, the Salvo House is a state housing authority facility. And obviously, there is a lease of this particular land that the Senior Center was built on. And I understand that parking is a challenge. It's a challenge throughout the city. So I appreciate, I appreciate your perspective.
Hi, my name is Karen Hollywood. And listening to you talk, what I'm concerned about is, you said that that room generates funding for the Senior Center. Is the town going to pay the Senior Center to use that space to replace the funding that that space now generates?
Well, certainly, the Senior Center, the Senior Services is a city department. And we provide funding to the city department. And to the extent that there's any revenue lost because of this move, certainly, I mean, this is a city agency, and so, I mean, we pay already a large portion of the budget here. There are revolving fund programs that raise revenues that go back into Senior Center programs. It's actually the same exact model for the Parks and Rec Department. We have, we put city money into it, but then a lot of the programming money that they raise goes back into supporting it. So let me assure you on that front, there will not be any loss of funding to the Senior Center because of revenues. But, you know, the loss of this 1,200 square feet, that's, that wouldn't be available for rental. So that should not be a concern. And, you know, to Jim's point, I appreciate what you're saying, Jim. And I appreciate, you know, the perspective that you have. And I think, I guess what I would do is, I guess what I would like to do is come back to this, to this community. I think six months is a bit of a challenge. But come back to the community in a year to understand, A, how it's working, and talk about what we've been thinking about more longer term in terms of solutions. So I'm even, I'm even open to doing another meeting in six, I'm even, you know, we could do a meeting, we can do a meeting in six months to get more feedback about how it's working. I guess what I'd like you to do is, please just allow us to do this now in the short term. Give it a chance so we can see how it works. And then, and then I'll be down here to meet with you, to get feedback on a continuous basis. And I'm going to be, I meet with the staff here anyway on a regular basis. And I can meet with the Council on Aging, who has that advisory role. You're on the Council on Aging, Jim. And I'll definitely commit myself to having, making this be a conversation. And it's not, and, you know, the idea that it's, you know, this is permanent and it's never going to change. Again, I have to stress, I did not wake up one morning saying, "Wow, where do I move the Parks and Rec Department today?" That was really not something that I saw coming, something that I wanted to do. We had a great location. It's worked for almost 20 years. Other forces, you know, have kind of come into play, and I understand the decision to do it. But it wasn't something that we were given a lot of time to be able to plan for. So I do view this as a short-term fix, but we'll find a longer-term solution. Jim, did you want to respond?
Let me make that commitment to you separately. You need me, I'm always available.
I appreciate that, Jim. Thank you. Now, there's been a first, oh, I'm sorry.
Anthony Petullo, I had a pleasure serving on the building committee here as well. And one of the things I remember in the meetings that we had was, we did, we knew we didn't have enough space at the beginning. We're almost 8% below what we wanted to have. We didn't have the parking we wanted to have. And now we're taking 6% away with this. Temporary somehow always seems to grow. And it's very, very worrisome that we're now almost at 10%. We're going to be 10% below where we should be at. And we don't have a clear idea how long that's going to go on. The idea of talking about this in six months is great. But I'm more afraid that we're going to continue this mode, and that we're going to continue losing this, and the seniors are still going to be wrong. That's got to be dealt with.
There's some folks in the front who've had their hands up, and so the mic's been in the back. So I know in the front row and then back here. Right here. Right here, right here, actually. She's had her hand up for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, good morning. And for the benefit of those others that may not know me, I will introduce myself. I'm Donna Slocum. I live in Florence in Ward 6. Prior to that, the rest of my life was spent in Leeds. So I've been around here in the city for a long time. And I've written down what I wanted to say so I would kind of stay on point and choose what you remember. Some of this, you've already pointed out, David. And I would like to say, Henry, please don't take this personally. It's not against your program. And thank you for being here. At the first, I'd like to say that the most valuable asset we have here at the Senior Center is our extraordinary staff. They go the extra mile for us every day. Next would come our building here at Conne Street, which for many seniors is a very important part of their everyday life. This is not just a facility for services. This is a place for friendship and family. And it's a busy time now for the seniors here at the center as well because, let's face it, some of us couldn't get out in the bad weather. I am not happy about this decision to accommodate the Rec Department here. But what I'm most angry about is that you chose now, weeks after this move was decided upon and initiated, to meet with us. Why weren't we met with and informed prior to the deaths taking place? Why didn't we have a voice in what would happen to our beautiful home away from home? I have several other questions. I'm going to read them all, and you can address them. Why wasn't our space you chose to take away? I have been told that this is a temporary room and can't help but wonder how unnecessary that expense was. Why not build a building with the Rec Department, their own permanent spot on Spring Street, in an office trailer or a place in the New Fields out on Spring Street? Some of this, I know David's already touched on. I noticed that there's a plane going up this week. I wonder what that building is. And I wonder if there's money for that, why isn't there money for a house for the Rec Department, which probably would be more important? If there's funds for that, there should be funds for the Rec Department. And I know you didn't want to build or rent. But one idea is to fight your school. That would have been another possibility for the program. I know we rent two programs there now. But I think the little rent that we give from them would be offset by the Rec Department being there because the Rec Department does get so many fees from their programs. And having to move them twice is an additional expense to the taxpayers. And this is also unfair to the Rec Department, which is being crowded into a big room, and no permanent installations of their equipment or their wiring. So it's also a trip and hazard foul situation created there. And we not only lost meeting space, but we had to lose half of our library because that had to be repurposed for meeting space. And that's fine. We are willing to share our spaces with each other. But that means if somebody comes to use the library and there's a meeting in there, they can't use the library. And we've had to give them the furniture and everything. And I'm just wondering if, or when we get our room back, how that's going to be replaced. So what's going to happen now, I also about the parking. And it's overcrowded, and there's buses running through. And I'm just worried that people coming in with their children will say, "Just wait up here. I'm going to run in." And then we'll have to worry about burying children in the parking lot, too. But I also want to know if there'll be an accounting transfer for budget line items to reimburse the Senior Center for the cost of maintenance, water, heat, air conditioning, et cetera, that the Rec Department uses? Or is the average senior center budget expected to bear this additional expense? These extra people in the building also add more work for our custodian. And will there be an adjustment made for him as well? This building was built for the sole purpose of being the Senior Center, and many of the donations we made were that intent, and some were memorials. And I wonder how some of those donors might feel that these gifts have been compromised or unappreciated. And what I've heard here, David, I'm sorry, with all this respect, I've heard a very own threat that we'd have to pay more taxes for the Rec Department to have their own space. And just a lot of excuses and nationalizations. We need something more tangible to know what's going to happen here.
I certainly, it's, not my intent to make threats, and I don't believe I've made any threats today. In terms of the cost, again, this is a city facility, and the city pays for all of the utilities. The city, it comes out of the city budget. Just like we pay for all of the utilities in other. That's right. Yes, ma'am, I understand that. It's city taxpayers. I guess when I say "we," I mean, we, the city budget, which is where all of your taxes go to pay for the heat in this building, the heat in all of our city buildings. It's actually paying for the heat, you know, in the Rec Department space as well. So we'll be covering that cost. It's not, it's not like it's going to be an added cost to the Senior Center. The building is heated, the space is, you know, electricity, utilities. So we'll continue to cover that cost. You had so many questions. I'm trying to think. You know, the facility on Spring Street, the Florence Fields facility, that is part of the ball field. There's a pavilion that was designed as part of the ball field.
It would have been a rec center.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. I understand that's the. I understand.
And you can use tax dollars and state tax dollars to build a over $2 million recreational center down at this beach spot. Why didn't you use the money, some of that money, to build yourself a little hospital?
Well, the situation, ma'am, is that that project's been planned for many years and has been built. And the other difficulty that we found with that particular site is many of our grants that are tied to that site will make it difficult for us to build a building on that site at this point because of the grant funding, because of the conservation restrictions that are on the property. That's going to be a challenge for us. But in terms of, again, trying to rebuild, to build a building there now, starting in the middle of winter in December, we're going to appropriate the money, we're going to go out to bid, hire a contractor, design a building, and build a building. There's just no way that that could happen. Not to mention the fact that we don't have the, we don't, we have to do longer-term financial planning to be able to build a project like that into our, into our capital program. So those are the kinds of things that we have to look at going forward. But it's not something we could do. Again, we even thought about the modular piece. Just very difficult and very expensive to do in a short period of time. That is a, that is a potential, that could be a potential use. That is a tax, actually. It is a tax. It's most definitely a tax. Yeah. And again, your taxes are paying for this building. I mean, that's, let's be real. Our taxes pay for everything. And we have a limited amount of tax dollars, and so we're trying to use them. I feel like I'm trying to use them pre-earlier.
Excuse me. When you have the mic, people show due respect. So how about you showing respect to people who are dropping out?
Okay. Mr., I think Mr. Dawson. Mr., I think Mr. Dawson.
David. David, you know, I've sat here and listened to the senior. We've all been involved with this building. I was involved originally when it was built. I was on the council. I think what you need to do is to not wait six months to create a committee, but create a committee now that will sit with you or with the Recreation Commission and discuss how we alleviate this situation. This is a temporary fix. This should go back to the seniors. But rather than wait six months, I think if you form a committee and get them active, there's many things that a committee can do. And one of the things that they'll do, the same as we do with the Senior Center, is fundraising. They will help the younger generation right now that has the kids on the ball field and everything. They're in a position to help, and they will fundraise. So I think rather than wait, you should get things started immediately. Thank you.
I think there's a question here, but I don't know where the mic is.
Good morning. My name is Mary Lou Jilson. I live in Northampton. I've been here, I've been here since 1975. After I started coming to this Senior Center, one of the things that we have been able to accomplish is to have people come in here, and we have provided recreation for them. We provided socialization for them. Our group that I have also worked with of seniors is the Scrabble Group. It started out with three people, and it is now 12. We're looking for a place that we can be that will not interfere with other things. At the present time, we meet in the mister. I don't know if that's going to continue. I think that what this gentleman, Mr. Dawson, said is very much what we need to do. We need to have some conversations with the people that it's affecting. And it needs to start now, not after it's already decided. Not wait until we are in this kind of a mode again. Provide the time and the people, and the elders will help you. If there's a space that can be utilized, they will help you set it up. I'm sure there's many in this room that have done so over their lifetime and can contribute to our community in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor LaBarge, I want to thank Anne Marie Mosio for sitting there, and at least she's got a beautiful smile on her face.
She's referring, this is our Parks and Recreation Director, Anne Marie Mosio. Again, I just want to stress, Counselor, this is not, blame me. Direct all your, please direct all your anger and blame at me. Do not direct it at either that staff or at the Senior Services staff. Because it's not, it's, I'm the person making the decision. So I want people to not, again, the Senior Services Department are working through what's been, what's been presented to them, just like the Rec, Parks and Rec Commission staff. This is not their decision. This is ultimately my decision. So I take responsibility. I don't want you to, you know, I just want to stress that. So thank you, Counselor. Sorry.
You're welcome.
I would really like to ask if people that are here have questions, if they have an opportunity to ask us.
Sure. But anyways, I have to agree with Peter Jones about transparency. I found out after the board had their meeting, and I had gone to the director of the Senior Center in regards to, was this happening? And she did tell me as a Counselor that she had a meeting with the mayor. They talked about it, and she apparently had brought it to the board. But I think immediately, right after that board meeting, that there should have been a meeting put in place immediately. And I think hearing from Peter Jones about the transparency, like he said, he had wished he had known this because it made a difference. So transparency is very, very valuable, and the mayor has heard this. But hearing how the director of the Senior Center and the Recreation Department are going to come together and try to make it work out. But I really think, Mayor, that you need to put in place a Citizens Advisory Committee immediately, immediately, so that their input is very valuable here.
Thank you, Counselor. And let me just say, I agree with what you and what Peter said. If I could turn back the clock, I would, I should have had this meeting back in March. I should have. So I, I can't change that, but I will say to you that I should have done that. So I appreciate. Well, if you're asking me why I didn't, I didn't. And obviously, I was working on other issues, I'm working on our capital plan, our budget, all kinds of other things, and I didn't do it. And so I accept responsibility for that, and I should have done that. So part of, part of life, part of this job, is a learning experience.